Education for April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. This is a meeting of the Board of Education in public and is not to be considered a public meeting. I always hate the way that's worded, so let me explain what that means. This is a meeting in public, for the sake of transparency. Members of the public do have the opportunity to address the board, but it is not a public meeting, as in this is not a dialogue. You have the right to address the board, that doesn't mean that anyone gets a response necessarily to their comments. Could we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Present.
Ms. Bryant?
Present.
Mr. Carter?
Present.
Mr. Kilgore?
Present.
Dr. Turner?
Present.
Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Okay. Board members have had the opportunity to see the agenda for this evening. Before we move to vote on the agenda, I would like to propose one change. I think it makes a lot more sense for what would have been item ten B.
Dr. Turner?
Yes. Okay, I think I would like to have the explanation of the school reordering here before the The vote for ten B will still be where it is in the agenda, but I would like to move the explanation for the school reconfigurations up to the start of the meeting. board reports and the communications and all that stuff. Okay, so I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Hawkins to present her information. I think it makes a lot more sense for people to hear the explanation before we get the public comments on it, so I would like to recommend that change.
Thank you, Dr. Turner.
(inaudible).
So, the community and the staff are aware that we have been going through a process
(inaudible).
All right, so with that, that change, that was moved by Mr. Kilgore, seconded by
with two different groups of auditors. One group of auditors is actually based out of the state, and they are with the auditor's office at the state level. The second group is linked to an office that's called the Performance of Accountability.
Mr. Carter. Thank you.
The Performance of Accountability focuses more on educational units, where the auditor's
Any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
office actually focuses on not only educational units, but it could be a township or a city
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
as well.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
So through this process, they will look at our finances, they'll look at different things,
Board members have also had the opportunity to see the minutes from the last meeting, March twenty-first. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes as presented?
they release the auditor's report, and we discussed that earlier about our finances.
(inaudible).
Moved by Ms. Anderson, seconded by Mr. Kilgore.
The other group is doing a performance audit, which means that they're going through and
Any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
they're looking at everything that we're doing.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
They're comparing us against other schools that are similar in size and demographics,
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
and then they are giving recommendations. Typically, this group is triggered when a district is going to be in deficit spending in year three. If you recall, last May, that's when our five-year forecast said that we were going to be in deficit spending in year three. So the purpose of this group would be to come in, do an examination, give us some recommendations, with the hope that you could put these in place, and then over a several-year period, you could recover some money and not end up in deficit spending. The difference for us, we moved from a five-year forecast that showed us going into deficit spending in year four to five, which was November two thousand and twenty-three, to a five-year forecast in May that showed us going into deficit spending in three years, to November that showed us going into deficit spending this fiscal year. So there wasn't a lot of time for them to give us these recommendations. The process is a six-month process, so they have been working with us for quite a while now, and they have given us some preliminary results. The official report from this group will be released hopefully by the end of April, so that Ms. Hughes can use it in the May five-year forecast. But we did have a presentation where they went over some of their bigger findings to encourage us to make some changes for the next fiscal year, so that there could be savings across the district. We provided some papers, some of you hopefully were able to get that as you came in. They did an analysis of all of our buildings, and they looked at how efficiently we were using our buildings. So if you glance down through here, the percent of utilization, the high school is actually over a hundred percent. They were at one oh one point three, the junior high was at eighty-six point eight, North Elementary was at fifty-six percent, South Elementary was at fifty-seven percent, and the ELC was at seventy-two percent. One thing that's important to note, when they go through and they look at our facilities, any space that they deem acceptable for a classroom will be counted as a classroom. So for instance, the ELC has sixteen classrooms, but if you look here, it says twenty. The large muscle area, they felt would be appropriate for a classroom. So if there's a space in the building that they feel could be utilized as an educational space, it will be included in their report, even though we may say, oh no, that's not a classroom, you know, that's used for something else. So had that not been twenty, the usage at the ELC would have actually been higher. In looking at this, our high school, we knew was at capacity. We have several floating teachers at the high school that move around during the day. We knew that the junior high was near capacity, so that really was not a surprise. So in their analysis, they said that they would recommend possibly two different things. One, to sell the Early Learning Center and move those classes back into North and South. So if we did that, that would put those buildings back up at a higher utilization, and it could save the district money if we could get what we paid for the Early Learning Center, which is around ten million dollars. That's probably unlikely that we would get that much. I'm sure we could get a couple million dollars for it, but it's unlikely that we would recover ten million dollars for it. The other option would be to redistribute our students, so that the buildings were being used more effectively. In an analysis of the numbers, and we did look at, for instance, having a six-through-eight building, because typically, that's more of a grade band than a five-through-eight, that put us at over nine hundred students. So the capacity of the building was a thousand fifty, and that percentage was just very high, so that's why it was five-through-eight. The high school would be a freestanding standalone building, and if we made this change, the utilization would drop from a hundred point three down to sixty-one point eight. North Elementary would be a one-through-four building, it would then have a utilization of seventy-nine point two. South would be a five-through-eight building, sixty-nine point two, and the ELC would remain the same at seventy-two percent utilization. So some questions have come up, how does that save the district money? How does it save the district money by making these changes? So a few ways that it does. One, we're going to, it would use our buildings more efficiently. So for instance, North and South, when we did an analysis of the class average size, they're not the same. You know, some, one building had around an average of nine students in one through three, the other building was around eleven or twelve. If all grades are in one building, you can balance out the classes much easier than saying, for instance, at South, we have lower classes or higher classes, we're going to move a group of students to the other school. That makes it more challenging. The high school was at a level where we needed to look at bringing in modulators, and we actually priced out modulators last year. There was a group that worked with District Office, I was trying to see if any of them were here tonight. We priced out what modular units would cost, and the big expense was that they have to meet code, just like other buildings, but that was priced out last year to see what we could do to give more space at the high school, because they're above capacity. The junior high was growing and getting near that capacity mark, so there had been discussions, and our grants team had been writing grants for years, trying to get money to actually build a standalone junior high, which we had not been able to do. By making the shift, the high school now has capacity to run some of the other programs that we have need for there, and the junior high also has capacity where a building would not have to be built. The high school also, with funding, we received money for students, and we had mentioned that our enrollment has dropped over the last several years. If we have students taking certain classes, we get additional money for them. We mentioned our culinary program. Any student that takes the culinary pathway to get that credential, we get extra money for that student. By making this shift, we were, we looked at two different programs last year. One was a machining program, and one was a healthcare program, and we could have had that at the school, totally funded by grant money, to give our students other opportunities for credentials and more money for the district, but there was no space at the high school. We looked at where we could put it in the district, we even looked at putting it here at District Office. I'm not sure if everyone's aware, we actually operate our alternative to expulsion program here at District Office because of the space issue. There's no space at all for the high school, and so that actually operates out of the first floor here at District Office. So it would open an opportunity for us to expand in the programming at the high school and bring in more revenue for the district that way, as well as pathways for graduation. If a student is not successful in passing the end-of-course exam, another way that you can get your high school diploma is by getting a credential. And to do that, a lot of times, students will go to Great Oaks. Some of our students may wait too long, you have to make that decision after your sophomore year, or the program that they want might be closed, you know, and so they don't have that opportunity. When we built the Culinary Center, that was based on student input, on classes that they wanted, as well as opportunity. We wanted every student at Mount Healthy to have the opportunity to take the classes that they need to graduate, and they also could earn an associate degree if they chose to go that route. So that was the first program that we really utilized to help our students graduate. We also have the early IT program at the high school that has been approved for CT funding, and Matt White teaches that. Not every student is going to be successful in that program. You have to have a love of math, a love of computers, in order to be successful in that program. So it does give us a lot of opportunities to meet the needs of our students. Other, you know, it does increase safety and security, as well as, we did vote to go open enrollment, and it does give capacity for open enrollment in all the buildings. We are not a rolling operating district. Now, what does that mean? It means that we have a definite time for open enrollment, which is May. People apply, they are accepted or not, and then they would start the next year. This does not allow students to just randomly come into our classes, they would have to go through the process. So I know I've heard people say, well, if a student were to be kicked out of another school, they were going to end up at Mount Healthy, that's not accurate. If actually someone applies for open enrollment, part of our procedure, if they have had discipline in the semester before the application, that is a reason for denial. So we are looking to enhance our student population with students who want to be here and want to learn. This is an opportunity where we could have space in all of our buildings to do that. In addition, we are looking at transportation. We have not received our final ruling on transportation yet, but every time you make a stop, it increases your transportation cost. So having the high school as a building, if transportation is changed dramatically, the law says that you do not have to have transportation for high school students. Whether you believe in that philosophically or not, I personally believe that everyone should have transportation to get to school, but we could be told that until we surface from this crisis, that transportation has to be removed from the high school, because by law, we do not have to provide transportation. By the high school being a standalone building, that would be one route that would be eliminated. There would not be a need to stop there. If the junior high was still at the high school, we do have to provide transportation for students up through grade eight. So if they were there, they still would have to go to the high school. So in addition, that is a savings to the district. So that's just a quick overview of why the decision was made to balance out our buildings. And with this process, we have not started putting out a lot of information about groups to form, how will the buildings look, all of those things are to come, because the first step in the process is board approval. So once the board makes its decision, we will be asking anyone who is interested to be part of planning groups at each of these buildings, so that the buildings can be part of the recovery process, and they can be the schools that you want them to be, from the community standpoint, from the staff standpoint, from the student standpoint. So that's an overview of how this decision was presented.
Thank you. I think also there were going to be some administrative cuts.
Yes, we, there, there will be, those haven't been decided yet.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Okay, now we'll, we'll continue with the, the rest of the agenda as written. So item six, six A is Mount Healthy Teachers Association, Ms. Wakefield. And I will ask that everyone who speaks has to use a microphone, so that it's picked up on the, on the video. Thank you.
Last month, I told you that the district had failed the teachers, staff, community, and students. I didn't think it could get worse, but here we are on the verge of restructuring the buildings. The questions that I keep getting are, where did the money go, and who is being held responsible? We have yet to have answers to either of those questions. We have heard about the five-year forecast being wrong, we have heard about the mysterious ten million dollar loan for the ELC, we have heard about the auditor's reports. What we still haven't heard is where did the money go, and who is being held responsible? Cutting sixty-seven teachers and moving around a majority of the remaining teachers is a really hard pill to swallow when we still don't know where the money went, and no one is being held responsible. Before this decision is made tonight, I'd like to ask if everything has been considered, such as the time and expense for moving so many classrooms, South not having lockers for seventh and eighth graders, changing building names and signage, changes related to extracurricular activities, and very importantly, how this will affect the families in our district. We know that enrollment always has ups and downs. Are we going to be doing this again in a few years? I urge you, please take the time to ask questions and be confident that this is the correct choice with twenty-eight days left in this school year.
So even though I said this is not necessarily a dialogue, since this is the, the teachers' union speaking, I would like to give a mini-response to that. I am not part of the team that's, that has been crunching all these numbers. I can assure you, they have crunched every scenario they can come up with. They have considered all of those things, I know they've talked about signage, they've talked about everything you mentioned. Bear in mind, the state is telling us, you either do this, you sell the ELC. I don't know who's going to buy a building that was meant for preschoolers at the price that we would need to get in this district. This is the best option, and they have, they have really run through everything that they can, and we understand that it's disruptive for our families and for our teachers, we get that. We don't have a choice, the state is saying you will do one of those two things. So this, this is the best option we have. Communications announcements, I think we have a few communications. So the way this works, according to our bylaws, anyone who speaks to the board must either be employed by the district, I think we've got that covered in here tonight probably, they must have a student attending the schools in the district, or they must be a resident of the district. So in the past, we've had alumni come in, you know, no, you have to be connected to the district in one of those ways to speak. You begin by stating your name and address, and you get three minutes to address the board, and I will be holding people to that three-minute mark. We've got quite a few here, and we want to let you have the opportunity to say what you want to say, but those are the rules that we, that we go by. And I'm just going to do them in the order that they're sitting here on the desk, so we will start with Denise Evans, I think it says?
Well, I was really hoping to go last. So I am Denise Evans, I'm a teacher. I was here last month and said the hardest thing was that we do not know what's going on. And here we are, a month later, and of course, we do not know what's going on. I think to keep us informed as much as you can, this redistricting, even though your explanation made great sense, came at five minutes to four on Friday, when we were all outside doing our dismissal duties. So it was a really hard pill to swallow, because it, to me, it came totally out of the blue. I did not even know that that had been a recommendation. So I'm going to piggyback on Julia a little bit, is we are all still very mystified as to what happened. The first I heard of this was in January, it was expressed that it was about a five million dollar deficit, and it was seven, and ten, now we're at almost eleven million. For some of us that are not in the know, that was unbelievable, because I thought school districts had that budget, and balanced their budget all the time. So that was really hard, and for a long time, many of us sort of thought, something happened to that money, you know, but it's beginning to sound like maybe it was bad management. And I'm still, as an employee, just baffled as to what happened to the money. And I'm wondering if we will ever know, as an employee. One of my other concerns is, when I walked into that meeting last month, I expected to see a treasurer's report, but I understand it goes to the board members, but I guess not to the public? How do I see the treasurer's report? Would that not be public? So do I need to request to see that?
No, I just forgot to put them out, I didn't have time to.
Okay, because, you know, coming in last month thinking we're seven million, I go on spring break, and then we're almost to eleven. So those are mostly my concerns. I do have a few other concerns, but I've been in several meetings today, and I think you all have heard my message, anything you can do to help the teachers, I think as soon as you can tell teachers where they're going, even if it's maybe, has to change. And I, I do think we need to sort of figure out where this money went. So, thank you.
Next, we have Erin Henwood.
So I'm Erin Henwood. A lot of it has been said already, and I think it's going to be said quite a few times, but even at this meeting, and in numerous occasions, you've said that you are kind of proud about how transparent you've been, and that is so far from what we've experienced last month, like she mentioned, this month, getting an email at the end of day on a Friday, and with a meeting the very next day, where we have no time to discuss, no time to ask questions, no time to do anything, is dismissive of us, it's disrespectful, that we wouldn't want to know. It's just, it's almost comical at this point, when transparency keeps getting thrown out, as even said at this meeting. So a lot of things we already mentioned, so I'm going to skip a little bit, but I don't, there's just a lot of concerns that are not being addressed, that I don't think they're ever going to be addressed. The finances, that's not my expertise, but I would still like to try to understand, but it's not being provided. But the upheaval that this will cause of restructuring alone, even if we could plan it out to a T, which it's not going to happen, with, what are you, twenty-eight days left? Is that not counting today? I mean, again, comical, like it's, it's, I don't know, I guess I'll just sum it up, that it seems very dismissive of your staff, and disrespectful to not think that we're worthy to know this information.
Next, we have Megan Simon.
So I found out about this laying in a hospital bed yesterday evening due to Facebook. So the lack of communication is clearly not there, because I didn't know any of this was happening. And my child, I have two students, one is getting ready to start next year coming into the district. The fact that you're reconfiguring, or whatever you want to call it, it's going to cause problems for parents. Honestly, from the beginning, I've been in this district now for three years, you don't consider the, the community or the economic, social economics that you have within the community when y'all make decisions. I have three children that I would have to bus to, transport to three different schools, because y'all buses are not on time, or they don't come, period. So how am I supposed, and I have, I have two jobs, because we all live in the same economic, right now, that's going on, I don't think y'all understand how this is going to affect parents who have to transport three kids and get to a job on time, so we can keep a roof over our kids' heads, and food on the table, on trying to figure this out. I have a special needs child, who yes, this is going to heavily affect her, because she has to go to a new building. She has autism and is non-verbal. This is going to severely affect her. I don't even know, staff-wise, how it's going to affect her, but what it sounds to me, she's going to be in a classroom much larger, that's going to be, that's going to be effective for her. So I will be one of those parents that will consider moving my kid and taking the, whatever funding the state gives to transfer your child, so that's another amount of money out of your district. I'm already considering moving my, my child, who was considered neurotypical, out of the district, because my children's education is highly important. They need to learn, they need to have staff, it needs to be an appropriate number of kids. Having a classroom of thirty, forty kids is not going to be the answer, and that's what it sounds like, is what's getting ready to happen. And I'm very upset at this, because y'all, y'all don't communicate. I found out this on Facebook, from a made-up group, from somebody who makes up something for Mount Healthy. It was not a letter sent home, and my daughter came home to school, came home from school today.
problems for parents. Honestly, from the beginning, I've been in this district now for three years. You don't consider the community, or the economic, social economics that you have within the community when y'all make decisions. I have three children that I would have to bus to, transport to three different schools, because y'all buses are not on time, or they don't come, period. So, how am I supposed to? And I have, I have two jobs, because we all live in the same economic right now that's going on. I don't think y'all understand how this is going to affect parents, who have to transport three kids and get to a job on time, so we can keep a roof over our kids' heads and food on the table, on trying to figure this out. I have a special needs child, who, yes, this is going to heavily affect her, because she has to go to a new building. She has autism and is non-verbal. This is going to severely affect her. I don't even know, staff-wise, how it's going to affect her, but what it sounds to me, she's going to be in a classroom much larger, that's going to be effective for her. So, I will be one of those parents that will consider moving my kid and taking the, whatever funding the state gives to transfer your child. So, that's another amount of money out of your district. I'm already considering moving my child, who was considered neurotypical, out of the district, because my children's education is highly important. They need to learn. They need to have staff. It needs to be an appropriate number of kids. Having a classroom of 30, 40 kids is not going to be the answer. And that's what it sounds like, is what's getting ready to happen. And I'm very upset at this, because y'all don't communicate. I found out this on Facebook, from a made-up group, from somebody who makes up something for Mount Healthy. It was not a letter sent home, and my daughter came home to school, came home from school today, and told me, "Oh, we're moving." So, is a decision being made? Because she's been told she's moving next year. So, am I wasting my breath at saying something here today? Because I don't feel like you don't consider us, as parents anyway, who are the ones who make decisions, their child going to go here or not. And I guarantee you, if there's other parents here in the room, which it looks like they're also considering removing their kids, so that's more funding out from the district. So, the fact that you open enrollment doesn't matter if we're snatching kids out, and we're telling people, because social media, it gets it out. If we're telling people, "Don't send your kids here," so the open enrollment is not going to do anything to bring the budget back. You need to work with the community that you have here. We are the ones, we're here. We're the homeowners. We're the ones that are here. You're focusing on something outside, but you need to look on the inside. And from everything that's been said, it sounds like a serious misallocation of funds, because even when I moved into the community, and then my youngest daughter is getting ready to go to preschool, and she couldn't get in, and they were like, "Well, it's not big enough." Why did you not build a preschool that was big enough? It sounded like it needed to wait. That building, the early learning center, sounded like it needed to be something that should have waited. That way, it could have been appropriately done, because I don't think y'all anticipated the number of preschoolers within your community, because that could have been a big thing. Y'all could have got funds for that, because y'all charge us $50 a month for that. But half of us couldn't get in, because it wasn't enough space. So, it sounds like there's a serious misallocation of fundage that happened, even before I got here, which was three or four years ago. And now, my children have to pay for your mistakes. I don't, I don't think any of you probably have kids in this district at this point. Okay. So, you should understand that your child's education is highly important, and it's not going, they're not going to get what they need, because you let go of 80 teachers, and you're going to pack them into classes. That's not, that's not going to be the answer. My child's special reading teacher has been let go. Will she have that next year? Probably not, because y'all felt like it was something that could go. So, I have to seriously look at somewhere else for my child to successfully succeed, because she's an honor roll student. And then I have the special needs kiddo, who has been blossoming here, but if she's in a class with 13, 14 other highly special needs kids, she's not going to get that one-on-one attention, and she's going to need to succeed as well. And I worked in special ed clusters in my career, and that is vital. I know what can happen when you are jam-packed in with those children who have needs.
Sorry. Try to wrap up, because your time is...
Okay. Well, that's all I wanted to say, because this is not acceptable, at all.
Next, we have, is it Chrissa Rogers?
Hi, I'm Chrissa Rogers, and I am over at South. I have spent all day readjusting this note, because I cannot get it accurate. And I'm going to actually repeat things that have been said in here, because I don't know any other way to do this. So, you say 10 million by June. What we need is an equal cut across the district. 4% at the board office, 25% of our teachers. Our teachers are the ones that make the impact of our children. You say hashtag worthy? We don't feel it. Hashtag worthy is at the board. Did you ask us for any of our suggestions? Not one of us got those questions, got those suggestions. We got our, once again, we got our emails at 5 till 4. Did you think about the expenses on the moves that you decided that affects most of us in our buildings? You are paying for the gas, the manpower, and the materials for most of our district moves, teachers, as they move to, from, or within each of our buildings. All of our former South students now need to be bused. We're back to four different schooltimes, not just the three that we have now. Did you think about the lockers for the 7th and 8th graders? For their science labs? We have one per elementary. Did you think about their breakfast or their lunches, that are now going back to elementaries? What about the teachers that now want to leave, after you have already cut 67 of our teachers? Why can't you leave the 7th graders alone, and leave them in their elementary buildings that they are in now? This would not only cost the money for the lockers for just one grade, but they could also use the one science lab that they already have. The 8th graders could remain in the building that they're in now. This would use the buildings a whole lot more efficiently than what you're suggesting, and it would still leave room for open enrollment for all of our families, preventing lots of chaos and stress for our district. This would also prevent 5th grade girls from being in the rooms with very mature 8th grade young men, which, as a parent, I would be furious. Our kids already have many challenges. They may be family, friends, learning challenges. They may be hungry. They may be worried about being kicked out of the next home that they've got. When they walk through our doors, they know someone here loves them. They know that they are getting something to eat. They are getting to see their favorite teacher. They know that they are safe. Their school is the only, may be the only constant that is in their life, but it is a constant, one thing that they can always rely on. To you, that may not matter. To us, that is one of the reasons why we come to school every day. And you know, as I said, school not work.
Okay. If you could wrap up, your time is up.
Oh, I'm almost done.
Your time is up.
You didn't fail the teachers, the families, or the community. You failed our kids. They are ours.
Thank you.
I've been in the district, this district alone, for 31 years. I'm an intervention specialist. I'm going to quote from the Education Destination 2.0. "The Mount Healthy Board of Education Administration and Staff are committed to providing an atmosphere and an attitude that actively partners with students, families, and communities. The option as recommended from the state to drastically change the current configuration of the district elementary buildings is too large a decision to make at this time. What efforts really were made to actively, actively partner with students, families, and community?" Some of the downfalls I see, and this is just me, and I'm sure they've been thought of by many people, there's at least one other option that we could, we teachers came up with. Yeah, maybe 7th grade could stay. There's no, this is not a research best practice to combine grades 5 through 8 to be together. That's the day and age today, best practice. It's yet to be proven that any money will be saved. South Elementary alone is a community-based school, and the only reason stated that South will be the 5 to 8 building, and North will be the 1 to 4 building, is was primarily based on sports and extracurricular activities. How is this the best option for student achievement? And I'm quoting what one of the administrators told us when that question was asked, "Why was South the one to have 5 to 8 for sports and extracurriculars?" The fact that the district money was mismanaged over the four years, at least that's what our take is, we should be learning from this very big mistake, and not make hasty decisions, which will greatly affect the recovery, the recovery progress of the district. I strongly suggest the board take some due diligence with this decision. Thank you.
Next is Jenny Mutters.
Hi, I'm Jenny Mutters. I'm a teacher here at the district. This is my fifth year here, my 22nd year in education. I have multiple questions, multiple statements, in which my 6th grade team, out of the six of us, three remain. Who knows how many will remain after this year? There's a gigantic lack of transparency to the community and the parents. Nobody was informed from the community and the parents. We found out before we left. I found out as I dropped my kids off, and then conversation already started. Why was the staff and the community left out of decision-making? Once again, staff is not valued or worthy. You're affecting the most amount of students and teachers in the entire district, students and teachers in grades 1 through 8. That's the most amount. It's too quick of decision-making. What are the cost-saving measures by doing this? What are the moving costs that's going to be incurred? Are boxes? Are materials? When are the classrooms to be packed and then moved, unpacked? When are we, as teachers, supposed to reconfigure our teams, reconfigure our classrooms? What will the cost for reconfiguring South be for the older students? All those little elementary cubbies, unlockable areas? Are we making lockers? Are we bringing lockers? Are we moving them from the high school, moving them to the elementary? How's that going to look? What about the size of the bathrooms? What about the bathrooms in the now 1st grade classrooms that are on the floor? What about the dry erase boards in all of the very lower elementary classrooms, that are no more than a foot or two feet off the floor? Now, you're putting 5th through 8th grade. What's the plan of how your 5th through 8th grade buildings will run? Will it follow 5th through 8th grade high school time because of sports? Are 5th and 6th now going to follow a middle school schedule? Teaching positions aren't technically told to us until the last day of school. So, when are we boxing? When are we packing? The last day of school? How about on our own time? That's what we like to give, our unpaid time. It seems like, sitting here, the decisions are made for the high school. What about everyone else? Preschool to 8th grade? What about, you know, here's some random choices. What about moving preschool kinderarm back to elementary? You're already reconfiguring South anyway. Send 7th and 8th grade there. Why not? You're already reconfiguring things. It'll be easy to do with that.
Sorry, your time is up.
I will finish my thing. How have all the district staff and assistants been covered?
Our next speaker is Debbie Amund.
My name is Debbie Amund, and I have been a part of Mount Healthy family since the 99, 2000 school year. I am finishing my 25th year as an educator for you, and my 34th year overall, and I have at least 10 more to go. As one of the senior staff members of the association, I thought it was my turn to speak up. I and we, as employees of Mount Healthy, have shown up every day for our students. We know most of them come with challenges in one form or another, but we chose to be here. We make connections with them because we care. We make school a safe, loving environment. We provide clothes, food, love, and opportunities to learn both academics, as well as emotional regulations. We have put our trust in you, as board members, to keep us safe. We have been let down. Whether it is from you, of those of you that currently sit on the board and administration, or your predecessors, we, as a district, are now struggling. As a board, you should have seen this impending set of circumstances coming, and made the adjustments in spending long before now. If someone was watching enrollment numbers, and they were declining, why did you give false hope to new teachers and hire them in a district that couldn't and wouldn't support them? You have now cut one-third of our teachers in one very long rift list, and the rest of us have no certainty in what grade level we're teaching next year, because obviously, teachers will need to be shifted around. I am currently an RTI teacher, and I'm excellent in my position. Due to administrative discretion and my licensure, I could get moved to a 5th through 8th grade gen ed classroom, where I have no experience, and if this happens, I will not, I may not fail, but it will be a miserable existence of a year. I am already dealing with my own health issues, and I now walk into a building where children need me to be there for them. But there is such a sense of doom since the last announcement, and others are just faking it, trying to make it through day by day. I walk past teachers who have been rifted and have no idea how to console them. I talk to teachers who have been let go, who have not been let go, but are now putting in applications elsewhere, because they don't want to deal with the aftermath of this drastic failure. So, tell me, how are we supposed to make it through the days, weeks, months, and years, until we were out of this situation? There are only 50 teachers in the entire district who have 10 or more years in Mount Healthy City Schools. How do we make teaching in Mount Healthy a place to go home and eventually retire from? How do we stop making our district a stepping stone for teachers and administrators? I have worked for eight principals and more administrators in my time at Greener, Frost, and North. Only two have retired from Mount Healthy City Schools. The others have left on their own, or moved to other opportunities within the district, and are now part of the reduction in force. I assume each of you have other means of income, and I understand that you recently are waiting for auditor reports before discussing and making decisions. For most teachers, this is our only job. Our families rely on our paycheck, and our dedication holds us here. But I can tell you that living in this sense of uncertainty on a daily basis is not good for anyone's mental health. And now, with this decision that you are about to make, our stability level is tilting more to the point that some teachers aren't here tonight, because they've given up.
Thank you. I'm sorry, your time is up.
We need answers to many questions. We need a board that not only supports us financially, but also has our back in other ways, and most importantly, we need to be included.
Our next speaker is Dani Russell.
Good evening, and thank you for the time to share. I'm Dani Russell. I'm a 5th grade ELA North teacher. I sympathize with the position that you're in. However, I stand here asking you to do the same of us. Your teachers, who show up every day, stay late, shed our own tears, spend our own money, and do everything that you ask of us, which have included, but are not limited to changing the grading system mid-year, moving start times and extending the day. We've tested our babies until they're sick of testing while losing precious instructional time, and implemented new curriculums in both reading and math. Now, we're asking, as you move forward in your discussion and your vote this evening, that you consider our concerns for what this means for our students as we move forward. I implore you to consider what it would look like to put all of our current 5th, 6th, 7th, and 8th graders together in one building. I ask you to consider all the factors, the behaviors, and the emotions, and even the hormones. The Plan B before you this evening puts our 5th graders in a building that they shouldn't be placed in. Let our 5th grade babies be naive one more year. Let them be sheltered just a little bit longer. So many of our students are already being asked to endure more than any of them should ever have to go through in home situations, that we can't even begin to imagine. I can't. I ask you to let them stay at the elementary school just one more year. Let us make those accommodations for them, whatever that looks like. If it means that we wait another year, if it means that we move ELC students, if it means, I don't, I don't know what that looks like, and that's why we're here, asking you guys. I just can't believe that the answer is putting our 5th graders into a building with our 6th, 7th, and 8th grade. I've run the numbers. I have a printout. My numbers are different than yours, but I have copies for each of you. I ask you to consider a Plan C, whatever that looks like. Consider a 1st through 5th grade building, a 6th through 8th grade building, where you recognize that maybe our 8th graders don't need to be exposed to high school life just yet either, and a 9th to 12th grade building. Proverbs 15:22 says, "Without counsel, plans fail; but with many advisors, many..." But with many advisors, many advisors, they succeed. That's all we're asking. Let us be a council. Let us advise together. Let us be a community that does it together. My prayer as we look to the future is that our eyes and our ears will be open to heavenly counsel and wisdom so that moving forward, our district and most importantly, our students can experience success both in and outside of the classroom. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Valerie Brewer.
Try not to get emotional. Okay, so this, I sub at South pretty much daily, but this is coming from me being a mother to a child that goes to South. The idea of him being placed with eighth graders, it bothers me. Like, there's, he can't go there next year. If that, if this is the plan, there's no way he can go there. He has to be removed from his friends and, you know, everything. That he's been there since kindergarten, he has to be removed. The amount of sexual conversations that come from these kids at earlier ages. So what, we're supposed to move like teenagers? So my child's supposed to be exposed to even more than he's exposed to as it is? Which I seem like, I feel like kind of gets dismissed anyway. They talk about whatever, no one's kind of monitoring the nonsense that my kid's putting in, which is making our job at home harder because we have to reinforce how we feel with, if it's just us telling him to do the right thing, but he's going to school with hundreds of kids telling him otherwise or exposing him to things I don't want him exposed to. And this is for, too many of us parents do care. Some of them don't, but we are forgetting about the parents who are actually putting everything we have into these children. So I already had to sit him down and let him know, well, you're probably nine to the ten, not going here next year. He's upset, of course. I just don't get why, who would think that putting a fifth grader, innocent child who we still do, all the childish things. The Easter Bunny, the Santa, all that type of stuff. And this child is actually going to these sex-driven older kids? Again, it's in the second, third, fourth. These kids are talking about it, so imagine what he's gonna be exposed to with these eighth graders. That bothers me. Like, he can't, he can't come here. That's, that's not an option. The bus rides. He doesn't ride a bus, but there are kids who get on a bus with no protection, no sibling, no anything. You're gonna put this child on the bus with these eighth graders that, again, to me, get no type of monitoring. Is someone walking around the bus to make sure these kids are being safe? They're not. Can my kid go to the bathroom and there's another eighth grader in, in the bathroom? Is that? I, I don't, I don't get why that part is being ignored. There's a ton I could say as far as the teacher aspect and all the nonsense we have to go through as far as that. But today, I'm speaking solely on my parental role. I give everything. I put every single thing into my kids. I've been, have kids that graduated Mount Healthy. Every single thing they've had in Mount Healthy since my kids have been here, I've been a part of. But to like dismiss what we're, you know, our role as parents, I, I don't get that part. We, you should reach out to us and maybe kind of let us maybe give some options. I don't really know any. But to just say, this is what it is. Your, your baby is no longer gonna be a baby because now he's, he's running with the big boys at this point. There's no saving them. The behavior issue, to me, nothing's done about the behaviors that the kid have. So now on top of the nonsense he's dealing with now, we're gonna double the nonsense that he's sitting in the classroom with and now we're gonna bring eight teenagers into that. That's ridiculous. The innocence of my child is important to me and I would like to preserve that as long as possible. Next year, it's not, it's not. I feel like he's done for, basically. So he, there's no way he can come here next year. And I just wanted to say that and at least maybe think about the little, their little innocent children.
Okay, your, your time is up.
Yeah, thanks.
Next we have Kim Brewster.
Y'all know y'all not happy to see me. I'm never happy to stand behind this mic because it's never for a good reason. I walked over here, my daughter has my card. I'm probably gonna bust a bubble because as an engaged parent, it was very disheartening to find out about this financial crisis from a news anchor who reached out to me via inbox. Because due to the countless meetings I have been present at, not just to speak, but to be visual, to be engaging, never once came up in conversation. Not one time. And I've been actively attending board meetings for over two to three years. So this is what I will say in a very transparent way because we may not be friends, but we're partners in this regard. If you're having a meeting of this size, I pretty much know that y'all have already made a decision on what y'all gonna do. Y'all are very reactionary and it costs, and these costs never touch our lives. You talk about lack of engagement from parents. You talk about lack of engagement elsewhere. How can we improve upon these things? How can we change them? I am starting to be convinced that that lack is not on our part. All of these beautiful educators, some have had my children, some have not, are sitting here. One of the ladies that got cut was a high school graduate of Mount Healthy who came back to serve this community in her counseling profession. And she was one of the first ones that got notification. So I would encourage you, again, because I know that this is reactionary. I know that you all have probably had to make a decision and that giving people space to speak only kind of relieves them emotionally. However, as a board, we are faced with an opportunity to change our behavior and be proactive and engage in a different way. To come up with a Plan A, Plan B, Plan C, Plan D, whatever that looks like. Because we cannot keep doing this kind of business. We cannot. We can't. What I will say, because I'm always very, I try to be non-biased. I know a lot of these issues you all were handed. This did not start with y'all. I've been a parent in Mount Healthy for over a decade. This did not start with y'all. But it is in your lap. And so, not pointing blame, but accountability at this level now has to be taken.
Thank you. I may have mixed up my cards here. Did I miss anyone? No, okay. I'm gonna say one thing, maybe two things, very quickly. And it probably won't go over well because when we had the big meeting in the high school and I said how much we all hated this too, I was practically booed off the stage for daring to express how we feel about this. Our administrators have agonized over this. You can believe that or not if you want to. Whatever you want to believe, that's fine. They have agonized. Our administrators are former educators. They've been teachers in the classroom. They understand these, these problems. They understand your concerns. If you think they just sat down and said, oh, let's just do this. It's been meeting after meeting. They're working way overtime. They're trying to come up with the best plan that they can. And that's all I'm gonna say about that. The administrator, the central office administrators are who, who we pay to make these decisions. We hire people who have the experience to make these decisions. Okay. We are moving on. For those members of the audience who do not wish to stay for the business portion of the meeting, now would be the appropriate time for you to leave. You're certainly welcome to stay if you want to. Item seven, Great Oaks Board Report. Ms. Anderson.
Okay, you all actually have meeting highlights from the last two Great Oaks Board meetings because last month I was sick. If you remember, was unable to attend the Great Oaks Board meeting. So just really quickly for the, the March Great Oaks Board meeting, some of the highlights were that we had an open house and a ribbon-cutting ceremony at a board meeting at the Live Oaks Career Campus. It was held, it was held at Live Oaks Career Campus following a multi-year thirty-eight million dollar renovation project. The Great Oaks Student Handbook was also voted on and approved. And Laurel Oaks Phase Two Construction, the board voted to approve the construction design for the Laurel Oaks Expansion Project Phase Two as presented by the Building and Asset Committee. Since this project is partially funded through the Career Tech Construction Grant, Great Oaks must submit the plans to the OFCC for review and accept them through a board resolution. This was the first of two reviews for Phase Two. So that was March. In April this past week, Great Oaks Aspire receives high marks from the Ohio Department of Higher Education. The recently released Ohio Department of Higher Education report card, the Aspire Program did receive those high marks. Ohio Department of Higher Education Aspire Program Manager Megan Arrington wrote in the evaluation summary, "In a year where most Aspire Programs were struggling to have a positive performance indicator, Great Oaks had a strong showing." There was also an increase in high school applications. President and CEO Harry Snyder reported that the total high school applications are up from last year with two hundred and sixty-nine, I'm sorry, two thousand six hundred ninety-two students applying as of March twenty-eighth. There were a total of thirty-six programs that require a lottery number for first-choice placement and fifty-seven programs across the four campuses are at capacity for incoming juniors this fall. And finally, the board approved a letter of intent to be sent to US Army, the JROTC Command in Fort Knox, Kentucky, to establish a program at Laurel Oaks in partnership, I'm sorry, the Junior OTC with Wilmington High School. If accepted, the program could start as early as this fall. The combining of Laurel Oaks and Wilmington High School would make the program a four-year program in Clinton County and the city of Wilmington.
Thank you. Next we have the Legislative Liaison Report. Mr. Carter.
So boards have, has the report in front of you. It's fairly active month. Some of the biggest highlights from the past month were funding enhancements. Some of Ohio's bio budget for fiscal year twenty-four and twenty-five has significantly increased state funding for education. So it's a record increase in the foundation formula, foundation funding formula, which aims to distribute money based on actual costs such as student T-shirt ratios and minimum staffing levels. The formula also considers student characteristics like disabilities and English proficiency to provide additional aid. Under the, the next topic is educational choice in charter schools. The budget also strengthens support for charter and STEM schools and expands the Ed Choice Scholarship Program. New provisions have increased funding for quality charter schools and facilities. And they have removed geographic restrictions on charter school locations and raised scholarships amounts. Additionally, eligibility for these scholarships has been brought in to include more students such as foster care students and siblings of current scholarship recipients. In terms of the legislation impacting school policies, yeah, Senate Bill Forty-nine, it would approve by the Ohio Senate Primary and Secondary Education Committee. Allows public school students up to three excused absences per year for religious expression days. The bill mandates alternative accommodations for missed exams or assignments due to these absences. House Bill Six and House Bill One eighty-three, these bills address gender-related policies in schools. House Bill Six requires schools to designate separate sports teams based on biological sex. House Bill One eighty-three mandates single-sex bathroom access in schools. In terms of the Parents' Bill of Rights, House Bill Eight, this bill mandates parental notifications regarding student health and instructional materials, emphasizing parental involvement in education. And then finally, tax credits and savings accounts. The state has introduced new tax credits and education savings account, education savings account program to assist families with private schooling and homeschooling costs. Their aim is to further support educational choice. So these are the significant changes in funding education policy for the month.
Thank you. Item nine on the agenda is the Report of the Treasurer.
Thank you. So I would like to give a little information. I heard the concern about going from the five million to the seven million to the ten million. Just wanting to kind of explain, in November, we did do the forecast for the district. And when building the forecast, we are looking at revenues along with expenditures. With our revenues, we have revenues from our local shares and from our state shares. Our local shares are what we receive in our property taxes and our state shares are the funding that we receive in our foundation payments, which are based off of student enrollment. So that's one section of the forecast. The middle section of the forecast speaks to the expenditures, which are, it includes staffing, it includes benefits, it includes purchase services, it includes goods and materials, and capital outlay. So when we are preparing the forecast, we're pulling the data that we have in our financial system, which we all know to be the state software of redesign. So what does that mean? So when we have staffing that gets hired, that information is plugged into the system by way of dollar amounts, figures. So we are, have the ability to run reports from payroll because each of you have an account code that you're being paid out of. So when we run staffing reports, we can see how much money is being pulled from your salaries, from general fund as well as our federal programs. So also within, within that, if your school secretary enters a requisition and she's entering it or he's entering it into the redesign system, that is something that when I get ready to pull reports about financial detail reports, which will show every transaction that it's in the system that has been submitted, right? So when I'm pulling that information, everything is on that report. So I work with a firm called Forecast Five. What we do is provide them with reports from our redesign system. Staffing reports and our financial detail reports. We use that data to actually build the forecast. So when I presented the forecast in November, we have to present the forecast twice a year. We presented in November and we presented in May. The forecast that we present in November is projections because we're projecting five-year, four, five years out. And when we present the forecast in May, at that time, it's more actuals because we are sending in reports on a monthly basis to Forecast Five to update our financial information. So everything in the forecast, it comes from our redesign system. So when I did the forecast in November, all of that information is based off of the information that we have in our state software redesign system. So the five million dollars was encompassing staffing, benefits, purchase services, it was a result of that, right? So when we had to revise our forecast after the state came in again with the fiscal oversight team, what we found was there were accounts that had negative balances from prior fiscal years. And we're talking federal programs, we're talking athletics. And when that happens, we have to then take the money from the general fund to make those accounts whole. So that's how we were able to go, I don't want to say able, but that's how we moved from the five million dollar deficit to the seven million dollar deficit in February. All of these presentations were done here at a board meeting. So when we looked at the revised forecast in February, when we went to the state, we had to say, okay, we are getting ready to run out of money and they wanted us to do a financial analysis. So I had to do a financial analysis to determine at what point the district was going to run out of money. So when we did that, that is what expedited the state auditors coming in because they had to verify our deficit before they would give us solvency assistance. But when the state auditors came in, they requested information dating back to fiscal year twenty-one. They went twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three. And when they came in, team of eleven, and did a deep dive of the district's finances... And when they came in, team of 11, and did a deep dive of the district's finances, that's when we moved from $7 million to $10 million because what they found was encumbrances on the forecast were not included dating back to fiscal year '21. So that alone impacts the bottom line. So encumbrances are obligations that the district have been, financial items that the district has been obligated to but may not have necessarily, may not have necessarily paid out at the end of the fiscal year. So we have to account for it in the forecast, but because those dollar amounts were not included, it impacted the bottom line. So it moved from, and I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but it moved from one amount to a lesser amount. So because that had not been happening for over three years, each preceding year, thank you, each preceding year.
Decreased.
So that, what, that's what caused us to be where we are now. So I wanted to be able to explain where we moved from the $5 million to the $7 million.
To the $10 million.
Thank you. So again, in May, I will have to do a forecast that will speak to everything that we're going through right now. And just to bring you all up to date, we are currently working with the fiscal oversight team, and we are meeting with them on a weekly basis. We are currently working to develop a recovery plan, I'm sorry, I talk with my hands, but we are currently working to develop a recovery plan. So what we have to do, when we met with them last week, they gave us our next steps. They explained to us because they had come and they had verified our deficit, that with the resolution and the governor's declaration is what expedited them being able to go to the Controlling Board to receive, for us to receive the funding, the money that we need in order to be able to finish out the fiscal year. So our next steps with that is they're working to develop the commission. We have been working to get candidates to be on the commission to help us to build this recovery plan. And these notes are as of Friday, and some things may have changed, but this is what was happening at Fri, on Friday when I presented this information to the Board. They are still working to develop the commission. So they're looking for parents, we're looking for those who live in the community that have children that are in the district, and they're looking for someone who has a child who's maybe in seventh or eighth grade where they could be committed to the commission for a long period of time. Because at this point, we don't know how long we're going to be in this predicament, but we want voices from the community that are going to be able to help us to build this recovery plan. So as of Friday, they were still, they as in the state, the fiscal oversight team that we are currently working with, because as we've given them candidates, they have to then give the candidates names to the governors for them to vet the candidates in order to be able to develop the commission. So that's where we are with that particular team. What I then have to do, first step for me, is to align our five-year forecast to the recommendations of the Auditor of State. So I am currently working on that now. We have a couple more things that we need to add in order to make our forecast align to the suggestions or the recommendations of the state auditor's forecast that they gave to us on April 1. Once I get through that process, then whatever the Board votes on for a recovery plan, the reductions, and whatever the performance audit team comes in and recommends that the Board would also approve, then I have to make sure that those items will be included in the forecast that I present in May. So these are the steps that we are currently taking in the Treasurer's office in order to align our district's five-year forecast to the state auditor's five-year forecast with all of their recommendations, all of the changes, or all of the, the issues from fiscal years '21, '22, and '23. So that's where we are at this time. My next update is on our recovery plan. This is a very fluid plan because as I receive information from the superintendent and her team, then I then quantify those items and add it to the recovery plan. So as of right now, for fiscal year '25, we have a cumulative total of $9.2 million in expenditure reductions. So this reduces the fiscal year '25 deficit from $24.5 million to $15.2 million. So that means this is the remaining amount that we still have to cut from fiscal year '25. So again, this is a fluid process. I am working with the Assistant Superintendents. This is something that we just started this week. We're meeting on a weekly basis to go over what these reductions will be so that I can quantify them and add them to the recovery plan because again, we meet with the fiscal oversight team every Thursday. So we want to make sure that we're staying on task so that as we meet with them, they know that we are doing our due diligence about developing the recovery plan. So for fiscal year '26, we have a cumulative total of $20.9 million in expenditure reductions, and this reduces the fiscal year '26 deficit from $43.5 million to $22.7 million. And the 20, I'm sorry, the $22.5 million. The $22.5 million represents the remaining balance that we still have to cut from fiscal year '26. For fiscal year '27, the cumulative total is $32.8 million in expenditure reductions, and this moves the deficit from $66.1 million to $33.3 million. So these numbers are cumulative because if, and I hate to say it like this, but if there was someone who was on the list that is being riffed, and I apologize for all of this, if they were able to receive an increase or if they were going to receive a step, then we could calculate, we could add that to the calculation in the workbook that I have to build every week. So that's what makes the numbers cumulative. So it's not just a, a standard rate. The rate is actually cumulative because we have the ability to calculate any step increase that an individual would have been able to receive. So with regard to fiscal year '28, the cumulative total is $44.7 million in expenditure reductions, and this moves the deficit from $90 million to $45.5 million, and that represents the remaining amount that we will have to cut from fiscal year '28. So this is where our recovery plan sits right now, but again, it's, it's very fluid, and this is something that we work on, on a weekly basis.
Could you be more explanatory?
So this document is talking, is talking about $45 million in cuts in '28, but just provide perspective on how, how big it's just the overall district's budget given for the year.
So typically, the district's budget overall are our appropriations. And when I say appropriations, that's very high level for what we are appropriating at the fund level. We operate off of funds. Fund One is general fund. Fund Two is our bond debt retirement. Fund Three is our permanent improvement. So we have different funds. So when we talk about appropriations, our overall budget, it includes our general fund as well as our federal programs and the other funds that I just spoke of, Fund Two, our athletics funds, things of that nature. So overall, our appropriations are, I believe, offhand, they're $56 million. That's our overall budget with our revenues from all funds.
So when we look at these numbers, a lot of this is due to compounding because it's a debt?
Yes.
Okay. So, so then what I see here is as we roll forward in the future, the focus has to be on early debt reduction so that, so that we don't get the compounding effect in later years.
Because we're trying to live within our means.
Right.
So Mr. Carter, you're right. So if we could, for instance, cut another $15 million for the next year, then that would not compound over the years.
Right.
Test, test, test.
Of course, they start going out and start using them.
Right. Okay, so the next update that I have is our district finances for payroll. We process our payroll on Friday, which is April the 19th. And as all of you know, if, we, we get paid twice a month, the 5th and the 20th of each month. If the payday falls on, if the 20th, or if the 5th or the 20th falls on a weekend, then we get paid, if it falls on a Saturday, then we get paid the Friday before. But what we do in the Treasurer's Office is when we process payroll, we process it two days before. So we're actually processing the payroll run on the 17th in order to ensure that all deposits hit the bank account the day of payroll. And this is something that we've done throughout. So because we are waiting to receive solvency, my goal has to make, to be making, is to make sure that there is enough money in the bank to cover payroll. So that's where we're sitting right now. So that's why I'm informing the Board, right now, we're going to pay everybody on the 17th so that it will hit your bank on the 19th. Okay? We do receive our foundation payments twice a month. Our next foundation is scheduled to hit on, I believe it is the 19th. I'm losing track. I want to say it is the 19th that we'll be receiving our next foundation payment. So rest assured, you will receive your payroll on Friday. So with our invoices, we are currently processing our operational expenses as much as we can. So the priority has been payroll, and then we're looking at items such as gasoline, electric, phone, water. We want to make sure that the students are being bused, so we're trying to make sure we pay Peterman. We want to make sure that the students have food, so we're making sure that our food services invoices are getting paid, rumpkey. So we're trying to make sure that our operational expenses, that we are making payments on them as well until we receive our solvency. Once we receive the solvency, we'll be able to start paying our vendors as we have done previously. So the next item is an event notice that our Bond Council, which is Dinsmore and Shoal, I met with them a couple of times last week, and our Bond Council is Brad Rui, and he is advising us to post an event notice about the district's fiscal emergency declaration. So because we have our school improvement, we have two debts, what we refer to as our school improvement from 2015 and our COPs, which is our Certificate of Participations from 2020, which is what we all refer to as the ELC. So these are the, the, the items that have been financed through bonds and securities. So what we typically have to do is we have to make payments twice a year for our school improvement 2015 and our COPs 2020. So when we make the payment, we're making the payment to Huntington Bank, which is our paying agent or our trustee. And when we make the payment to them, they then make the payment to our bondholders. And because we have bondholders and we are in, we've been declared in fiscal emergency, our Bond Council is recommending that we have a notice that says we are in fiscal emergency so that they know because we have to, as a result of this, as a result of us having bond securities, we have to file a disclosure every year, a financial disclosure that speaks to just about everything in the district, from enrollment to staffing to, they want to know about our millage, they want to know about our millage rates, everything that pertains to the finances of the district, we have to disclose this in our annual information statement that gets posted to a website for bondholders to be able to view. So because we have to post this information and because we are in fiscal emergency, now we have to notify our bondholders that we are indeed in fiscal emergency. So this is what our Bond Council is recommending that we do, that we would post this so that our bondholders would be aware of the condition or the financial state of the district. Okay, so those are the Treasurer's Updates. So I'm moving to Letter B, and I am recommending that the Board would accept the financial statements for March 2024.
Second. Moved by Mr. Kilgore, seconded by Ms. Anderson. Any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
In Letter C, I'm recommending the Board to authorize the Treasurer to transfer the following funds, which, these are recommendations from the Auditor of States. We have four debt payments, two from fiscal year '22, and two from fiscal year '23 that were never transferred from the general fund to the debt services fund, which is Fund Two. So I am recommending that you would authorize me to make these transfers from general fund to Fund Two in the amount of $1,378,350.
So move? Moved by Mr. Kilgore, seconded by Ms. Bryant. Any discussion?
Any legal way on timing?
Say that again.
Any legal way on timing?
I will do this as soon as possible. I can't do it before you all approve it, but we, all we have to do is enter the...
I'm asking you to advance it.
No, no. What do you mean?
Just in light of what I just heard in terms of the numbers, just the timing, is there any way to push it back?
No.
Okay.
Because this is a part of the forecast. And these are items that should have already been transferred.
Yeah. These are items that are very...
Yeah.
And today, the solvency amount was approved at the state level.
Okay.
And so it went through all of the necessary checks and balances, so we should be receiving that shortly.
Yeah, because I just heard assurances that we'll be able to pay our bills, and I'm hearing we're moving money, so I'm processing that.
This is included.
Yeah.
These are things that the Auditor of State found that had not been handled properly and that needed to be balanced out.
Fine, fine. Okay. That's all I got. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Hughes. Item 10 is the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Hawkins?
Thank you. Item A is informational items. The first thing on the list, we have a change for our fire alarm system, and Dr. Ogden is going to give us a quick overview of why that change is necessary.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Hawkins. Just wanted to talk about a couple of updates with the administrative addition. We're, we're tracking quite well. Number one, our substantial completion right now is November 5th. We were hammered pretty hard in January with rain. In fact, it was either a swimming pool or an ice rink through the month of January. So February wasn't too bad, got hit pretty bad last week with rain, but at least we have elevator shaft completed. We will have to be updating the entire fire alarm system here at the Board Office. That is included in the contingency and the owner's allowance and everything. It's just, I, I asked Dr. Hawkins if I could just update you because I, we always talk about the change orders, but this one actually includes the entire building, and it's because of the age of the building and the age of the fire system. So do you have any questions?
And as a note, any project that is approved by the Board, this is grant-funded. There is a amount of money that is set aside for things that are unforeseen. This is one of those things that they didn't anticipate, but there is money in the project. So this is not a charge that would then be applied to the general fund. As Ms. Hughes has been talking about, it's still part of the overall grant project.
So it falls within contingency?
It does, yes.
So this is an updated system or reconditioned?
Update.
We have to redo the entire thing. It comes down, Mr. Kilgore, it comes down to the panel that is 13 years old at this point. And it just will not sync up with any current technology. So we have to do it in the elevator shaft. And then when we're getting permitted by the city of Mount Healthy, it will not speak to the rest of the building. So the whole thing has to be redone.
Thank you, Dr. Ogden. So the change orders are listed for the elevator project. And they're listed below, change order 10 for the footing. 13, removing gravel. If there's a dash, there's not an extra charge involved. Number 14, $618.64 for a Knox box. Dr. Ogden has talked about the fire alarm, which is part of the contingency budget. Did you want...
Yeah, so the... Knox boxes, so EMS can get here. It allows them to get in the building. It'll be built into it. All of our buildings have this as a safety parameter. Our local police department and fire department not only have those keys in the Knox box, but they also have our night lock keys, similar to what is on the wall here for our classroom, so that they can have access to our buildings in an emergency. So, yeah.
Thank you. And then change order 18, we received a credit of $250 for signings. Okay. The next item that we wanted to update you on is a program called Right at School. And this is going to be our new after-school program. Jana Wolf is in the hall. I'm gonna have her give a quick overview of this program.
So we have actually been looking at Right at School for... There's going, I think. We've been looking at Right... We've been looking at Right at School for about the last three years. Champions has done a great job for us, but we felt that we really wanted the kids after school to have a little more enrichment. So Right at School is a, is more structured. They'll go in and kinda start off with like a town hall with the kids. And then they'll do some exercise and movement with the kids. And then they'll work on homework. And then they will do like every two weeks, some kind of enrichment unit with the students. And after that, they'll do some more fitness activities. And then kinda close up with, because at that point, you know, you may have less kids there, they'll do some choice activities with the kids where they can choose what they do, like maybe chess or arts and crafts. So we just felt like this would give our kids a little bit more after school for our students that have to stay. It does not change the cost at all for our parents. It's actually, I think in a couple instances, a little bit less expensive for our parents, but basically stays the same and doesn't cost the district anything.
Thank you. Item B is the recommendation to reconfigure the Mount Healthy City School District buildings, beginning with the 24-25 school year. North would be grades one through four, south would be grades five through eight, and the high school would be grades nine through 12.
Do I have a motion? Just tell me. Do I have a second?
Have a second.
Moved by Ms. Anderson, seconded by Mr. Kilgore. So before I ask for discussion from the board, I'm going to ask Dr. Hawkins if you would like to address any of the things that were mentioned. Like I said, there is no, it's not a back and forth discussion necessarily, but I suspect you might have a few things you wanna add.
I do have one question. Is C the official teachers' proposal?
It is not. It is Ms. Lynn.
Okay, okay, thank you. I thought maybe that was like from the teachers' union collectively. What's that? Okay. So I did want to note a few things. When we've talked about raising class sizes, it was mentioned there will not be 30 to 40 students in a class. The class size cap for the state is 25. That is a lot more than what we have right now. We did use Esser money, which was grant funding, to try to lower the class sizes because we had a lot of students that needed that one-on-one attention. And so we did make an effort to lower class sizes to give that intervention to our students. So a cap of 25 means that that's what the average is. There could be some below 25, there could be a couple over 25, but there will not be a class of 40. So that's, you know, I wanted to make sure that we understood that. With the transparency that was brought up several times, I do want to just make a few comments about that. We have been trying to pass along information as soon as we receive the information. So for instance, someone mentioned the auditor's report. That was given to the board on the first of this month. They officially approved it on the 5th of this month. We, a lot of times, will find out about the report fairly close to whatever that date is that it's released. So we have been trying to pass that along. A lot of times, what we're passing along is what we find out in maybe a day or two before. With the buildings, that report has not even been released yet. So that is the report that will come out hopefully by the end of April. When we met with the performance audit team, they told us this was coming. So for the main reason that many of the teachers have said, we have this number of days before the end of the school year. We wanted to get that information out sooner than later. Had we waited until the official report was released, this would not have gone at the earliest on the May board meeting, possibly the June board meeting. And so we were trying to, as soon as we found out that that's what was going to be a recommendation, we were trying to put that before our community. I do understand that the desire of planning and input and this whole process, I know, I appreciate what Ms. Hughes said today about giving more insight. This is not a collaborative process with the state. And that's hard to just, it's really hard to describe. I've never been through this type of process before. This is not a process where they say, hey, why don't you consider doing this? This is a process where they say, you will do this. And you have, they'll give you different areas where they will say that cuts should be happening. In the performance audit, when they went over the preliminary results with us, in a lot of areas, we were aligned. Like for instance, when they compared us against our peers and they found peers across the state, our salaries were not out of balance. They didn't say, oh, here's the problem. You're paying all of your staff members 20,000 more than what your comparative peers are. That wasn't, that really, that was not the case. Actually, we were a little bit under what the comparisons were. They, you know, they looked at a lot of things. They looked at our health insurance, they looked at benefits. They went through the contracts for certified and classified. And the main area that they found that we were out of alignment was our buildings. So I do share your concern. And there will be many, many opportunities if the board approves this, where there will be a committee for each building that will plan what that building will look like. There will be parent committees, there will be student committees. The first thing that will go out, and will go out if the board approves this tonight or tomorrow, will be the opportunity for all students, community, and staff members to give input into what should be our guiding principles through the recovery process. So there are some things that we don't have much control over because of our fiscal situation. If we were not in deficit spending, then we would have total control. If, you know, a year ago, when we did, when I thought we were not in deficit spending, we could have had a discussion to say, are the buildings being used the way we want them? Is there a change that maybe people want to see take place? And we have total authority. But when we ask the state to step in and give us a loan, then we give up that autonomy. There is going to be, as has been referenced, a separate board that will be put together. It's a fiscal oversight committee that will have five members, just like our Board of Education. Once that's formed, they will approve all purchases for the district over $5,000. So no longer will our Board of Education have the final say on that. That fiscal oversight committee now becomes our guide for that because we're asking for solvency assistance. So I do share your concerns. You know, I know we have amazing teachers. I know that you make a difference every single day in the lives of the students that you work with. And so this is not a light decision. And it is something that I, you know, honestly, I wish we could change it. I wish we could maintain everything exactly the way that we have been because students who are behind academically need more intervention. They just do. And so the smaller class sizes, the more layers of support with mental health and other types of things, they have made a difference in our district. And I have shared with the board, when the first year I was here, we were in remote quite a bit. The next year, we had 153 students that were put up for expulsion. That's a lot that are basically being, you know, we're saying to them, you can no longer have an education. We started putting in these layers of support for our students. This last year, that number dropped to 51. That shows that things were working. The things that you were doing in the buildings every day, it was working. It was making that difference. Unfortunately, the district as a whole could not sustain that financially. And I know, you know, when it's come up over and over, where is the money? Who's being held responsible? The money, as Kim referenced, the auditors went through, they found the issues with the money, and they issued their report. As she mentioned, we operate based on the five-year forecast. When the five-year forecast is our guide on how many people we can hire, what we can do as a district, and that's what we use. So the compounding effect of that with the auditor's report, if you go on the State of Ohio site, you can pull that. And it shows everything that the auditor went over with us on the 5th. Or they released the 5th, the 1st. So talking about the compounding effect, the 21 fiscal year was off by 1.5 million. And that's, I think that's fairly in the range. As Kim mentioned, in November to May, there's gonna be some things that are unexpected. South one year, literally the walls started to separate from the building. We didn't anticipate that. We had to find a way to pay for that. The next year, it was off by about six and a half million. That's what the auditors found. However, we were operating, we were hiring, we were buying curriculum based on the number that we had. And you can say, well, you should have known there wasn't money there. We did not know that there was not money there. The next year, it was off by $18 million. And we again continued to operate as if we had $19 million to use for different services. That was the balance that we were supposed to have at the end of the year. Instead of having that, we had 600 and something thousand dollars. So that compounding effect over four years, that's what caused the district to be in the situation that it is now. And the loss of enrollment is another factor. We went down by almost 1,000 students. That's, you know, roughly around $10 million. That's a lot of money. Our special education services have risen quite a bit. We spent over $10 million last year in special education purchases for our students. Those are mandated by law. And they were reimbursed at a very small amount, for about 400,000 of that was reimbursed to the district. Those students that need those special supports, that's part of their IEP. We don't choose who gets the support and who does not get the support. So that was a hit. So there are many factors. If we had just received full reimbursement for our special education costs, that would have taken care of the deficit. If we'd been reimbursed $10 million, we wouldn't have an excess, but we would be about breaking even. But the state did not reimburse us that amount of money. But by law, we have to honor those IEPs. Another component of special education services, we, you know, you've heard a lot about that we've been writing grants for a variety of things. Anything that's mandated in the IEP, by law, has to come out of the general fund. So even if somebody might say, okay, we've got this title money, we've got this grant money, why couldn't we use that on our special education needs? By law, we can't. We must take that out of the general fund. This is not an easy issue. I don't think that there is one person who is responsible. I think that would be easy to just say, this is the main thing that is responsible. There's a lot of factors that played into the level of what's going on with the district. Our funding for the next year, part of that compounding, as Ms. Hughes mentioned. The property taxes went up in Mount Healthy. The value of the homes went up, so our funding was cut. Last year at this time, you may have heard about the fair funding bill that was going through, that did go through. They determined amount of money that they said Mount Healthy City Schools deserves. And we received 66% of it. If that we had received that at 100%, that would have made a big difference for us. We have not passed a new ongoing levy since 2003. Most districts, if you listen on the news, you'll hear districts say, we haven't put a levy on the ballot in three years, in four years. We have not put a new levy on the ballot in over 20 years. That has an impact. And I'm gonna say, when I came to the district, I did not wanna put a levy on. That's why we focused a lot on grant funding because we did not want to have to run a levy. A levy also is not free. I'm not sure if people are aware of that. I did ask the city manager how much it was to put the levy on that they recently passed. About $15,000 just to put the levy on. Now, I'm not saying that we won't have to go that route in the future, but when we polled people, we had no indication that that levy would pass if we put it on right now because of the increase in property taxes. So we're trying to be responsible with the money. I understand that this is a very emotional issue. It's been an emotional issue for everyone here and everyone in this room. And, you know, I know you feel that we have not been as transparent as we should have been. And we will definitely take that, you know, to heart and try to even pass out more information. I just wanted to really stress, it's the difference in, a year ago, if we were making a big decision for the district, we would have the autonomy to take time and really think about it. You lose that autonomy when you move into fiscal emergency. You now have someone who is overseeing the way your district is being run. So we're trying to set up the district in a way that we can recover and continue the amazing work that you have done for decades and decades at Mount Healthy.
Do the board have any discussion?
So I see this document, this, I guess... So I see this, this document, this, I guess, proposal, and one of the questions that I had, does this proposal take into account, or do the numbers for the buildings take into account open enrollment, growth, anything like that?
These, the first two, which was in the initial, shows what we have right now in our buildings. So the top chart, the high school at 101, the junior high at 87, north 56, south 57, ELC 72 percent, that's what is going on right now, the way that they're structured. If we do make the shifts, then it balances out the building. The high school would be 61.8, north 79.2, south 69.2, and the ELC 72. That does allow for growth in all of the buildings. The page that you have had the additional proposal, and I want to say that we did consider this. We, because a six through eight building is a more typical building. The challenge was that we would then start that building at capacity. So as, and I appreciate the numbers, the, we looked at that, and as is listed here, based on the numbers right now, you would have 1,010 students, and the capacity of the building is 1,025. So while I think a lot of people, if you just ask me, which way would you prefer, five through eight or six through eight? Of course, six through eight. But that moves the building to 98.5 as far as the capacity of the building, which we felt was too high. And so that's why the fifth grade was included in the proposal.
I have a question. You know, I, while listening to all of you talk, I, I did write down every point that you were making, and I do understand the idea that you all felt like you didn't have any input or wanting to input more and wanted more time with this. I, I do understand that, I feel that. I will say, just as a little clarification, as a board, we also don't get much, much time with it. As a board, I don't know if you all are familiar with how the boards work, but we are not allowed to discuss things outside of the public realm either. So we typically learn things before the board meetings. We schedule the meetings, and then they're presented to us at the same time that they're presented to the board, or I'm sorry, to the public. So when we found out about this, this deficit, it was in November at the board meeting, and Ms. Brewster, I don't know where she, where she went. She does come to a lot of board meetings. I know her by name because she is the most active parent I have seen in this district, and I appreciate her. I don't know if she was at the November meeting, but that's when we all found out about the, the fiscal forecast, and, and the issue was in the November board meeting. So I, I do understand that need for transparency. I wish that we could give you more, that, you know, we give it to you as we find out. Dr. Hawkins and Ms. Hughes do a great job of relaying the information to you in the form of newsletters. That's just, you know, a little bit of a disclaimer, but I guess my question for Dr. Hawkins is, you know, if we listen to the staff and try to allow them time to give input before we make a vote, because I understand that there's probably a deadline for when we can do this move, probab-, I mean, I don't know what that deadline is, if it has to be at the end of this year or the beginning of next year. My fear is if we delay this vote, that that gives, because the other concern was that they only have 28 days until the end of the year. So I don't want to delay any votes and then give people less time to plan. So I guess my question is, can you clarify what the timeline looks like if we were to delay to allow some input?
Sure. Right now, the fiscal commission has not been formed officially. They are supposed to form it within 15 days of declaration. Declaration was on the fifth. So right now, we are acting proactively based on the recommendations. They, once it is formed, then they can come in, for instance, and say, okay, we want you to sell the ELC, and we would need to move on that. We're already behind. I mean, the staff, all right, we're on a tight timeline to have this done by the start of school next year. We could just say, we're going to wait and wait and see what the state says. The likelihood would be to move, that's what they've already said, move preschool and kindergarten back into the north and south buildings, which would be much, it'd be an easier move than the moves that we're talking about, and put the ELC on the market. However, I do not believe we'll get $10 million, and that is what, actually, our bond is 10.5 million that we owe. So if we sell it, that might be a few million towards the debt, but then we still have to pay the rest of that. We could take a chance and just say, okay, we're, we know that the state has said this, but we're going to hold off. We're just going to hold off. And then everyone would be in limbo for this next year. There would be time to talk more about it. In the end, the choices are going to be the same. So there, and that's something, you know, for people to know that this is coming, and you have a year to kind of live with it, I think in some ways could be beneficial and in some ways could be detrimental because people would be grieving that this is what's going to happen. But we would, that is an option. We could say, we're not going to do anything. We are going to study it and just take our chances. And then when the fiscal oversight committee comes in, there's no way that we would be able to move the buildings, you know, once the sum, right now, we're already behind in the timeline to get things done by the start of school in August. So, you know, we would take a chance. They may say, hold on, but as Ms. Hughes said when we were in our meeting last week, I feel that we have cut and worked on everything we possibly can. And they said to us, okay, you're getting near $10 million, you need to cut another Another 15? Where? Where are we going to cut another 15? So, you know, that would be, that would be the option that we would have. And I can't say what would happen, but the most likely would be move the, move the ELC back into the buildings and try to get a buyer for the ELC.
And also keeping in mind that compounding effect, whatever, whatever we put off makes the number bigger.
It does. And I, I just want to say, neither of these are optimal. What would be optimal is if we could have built a standalone junior high, and, you know, the grant people had been working on that and had applied for different things, a problem-based junior high, and we, it's 40 to 50 million if, if anybody's interested to do that. And so we obviously can't afford to fund that ourselves, and we did apply for several grants, and we did not receive one for that. We do have the land for that, but that's the cost to build a standalone junior high.
So adding to, to what Ms. Anderson asked, I think we can't wait months. Could we wait a week or two? I'm hearing the teachers say they already don't have enough time. Would waiting a week or two help? I mean, we have to vote on this in a public meeting. It would mean we'd have to schedule a special public meeting to do that. I guess my, my question to you, if you had to give it a percentage, what percentage certain are you that there is no better way to come up with the money that we need? Would you put it at 90% certain? I know it's not 10% certain. I know you're way above that. Would, would another couple of weeks make a difference? I'm hearing both that the teachers want more time and that they can't afford more time because they already don't have enough time. So I don't know where the answer is with that.
I do not think a couple more weeks would make a difference. I think if the board wants, and I'm going to say, we had a lot of discussions, I don't know where Dr. Ogden is, about this, that it would be better to wait a year. It absolutely would be better to wait a year. And we had many, many discussions that that, that would be what is preferred. The compounding effect, you know, right now, as Ms. Hughes said, they still want us to cut $15 million. That doesn't include the 5.5 million that we have to add on to that for the loan that we were just approved on. That doesn't include that. So it's really like 20 million that we have to find money for. So while I would like to delay, and I, if the staff, I've heard everything that you've said, I've heard what the parents have said, and I appreciate everything that you have said, if we wait and plan a year, that deficit is going to grow. There, I would like nothing better than to have the money to keep our buildings like they are, to find another space for the junior high, and to move on into that direction. So if the board wants to wait, I wouldn't wait two weeks. I would wait a whole year and take the chance with that because I think that two weeks isn't, is actually going to penalize the teachers because then that's two weeks less that we have to develop processes. We have not set processes in place because it has not been board-approved. So while we have had some discussions on what might happen, until it's board-approved, we don't sit down and start dealing with all of the nuts and bolts. If, if the district wants to do that, I would support that 100%. My concern was, we still have, in essence, $20 million that we have to cut next year. And this was the major recommendation from the performance audit team that our buildings were not being used effectively. So, you know, that's, there isn't a win-win situation in this. So if the, you know, if the board does want to wait a year, I mean, the most severe would be that we were told to sell the ELC, maybe we put it on the market and see if somebody will give us $10 million for it. I don't, I don't think so, but maybe that delays a year. You know, so it's, it's just choices that are not great choices either way. But I do not have a problem waiting a year and involving staff. The issue came down to what the auditors were pushing for us to try to cut.
And they may not give us, in fact, I would guess they're not.
Well, I don't know how we move in the middle of the scho-, well, I shouldn't say that because every, as soon as I say that, it'll be like, guess what, Christmas break, we're changing all the buildings. Right now, as Dr. Ogden has discussed with me extensively, we already feel we sh-, you know, we're like six months behind. So we don't discount that this should have been taking place a long time ago. Six months ago, we didn't know we were in deficit spending. We literally did not know until the November meeting. That was the first time that we found out that we were in deficit spending for this year. And so it was a shock to everyone in the district, and we have been working through it since then. So, you know, I'm open to that. I know these things are big decisions that seems like, you know, why haven't we got input? Why, why haven't we involved people? This was not Valerie Hawkins's idea. This wasn't something that I'm like, oh, let's change all the buildings. This was something that came from the auditors, and they wanted us to look at our building utilization. So that's why we were moving in that direction.
The light's red, so their battery's running out.
We need a new microphone system, but we're not going to spend money on that. One thing that, that I, I'm not saying this will happen, not by a long shot. I'm, I'm confident that it will not, but one of the things that came up in one of the meetings with the state people was the question of, what if we run out of money and there's just nowhere else to get it? The district shuts down. That's what happens. The students are sent to the neighboring districts. The district's debt is sent to the neighboring districts. I'm sure they love that. Here are more kids, and you get to pay off our debt. It's, it's, it's not something that has happened often in the state of Ohio. It has happened. There have been districts that have run out of money and been shut down. It's, it's just like your family. If you don't have money to pay your bills, the landlord doesn't just let you keep staying there. Grocery doesn't give you a line of credit forever. So we have to make some incredibly difficult cuts. Like Ms. Hughes said, right now, we're getting a loan from the state. That's so we can make payroll over the summer. That's so teachers will be paid over the summer. And the state only gives those loans if we do what the state tells us we need to do.
I do actually have another question. So some of the issues with the, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, my microphone is off. My battery's dead. Sorry, guys. Some of the issues that the audience brought to light about the buildings, such as the bathrooms and the lockers, do we have answers for that?
We have preliminary discussions, but again, we were not going into major planning until the board approved. The early discussions would have the younger grades on the first floor with older students on the higher floors. But again, we have not gone into discussions. We genuinely plan that if this is the decision of the board, to develop teams at each building and have the teachers, the parents, the students that want to be part of that process to look at the issues and work through those as a team so that they feel like they've had a voice and that they can address those issues. So we have not gone through all of the processes. And with the ELC, when someone made a, I think it, someone mentioned, why wasn't the building built larger? Okay, I forget who, who that was. Okay. So when the district decided to build the ELC, which was back early 2020, at that time, there were eight kindergartens, actually, not quite eight, and then they had six preschools. So they made eight kindergarten classes and eight preschool classes, thinking extra room for preschool and extra room a little bit for kindergarten. When the building was built and we got our new enrollment for kindergarten, we had 10 kindergarten classes. So as soon as it opened, we were over capacity. And the projections, I wasn't part of the projections, but they did projections on what they thought the kindergarten class size would be, and that's why they decided on the eight and eight.
I'm just curious to how you did the projections when Colrain is right up the road and they already know how that their district is likely large. We catch the Colrain. So how did your projection be?
Okay, sorry, I'm going to remind you that this is not a public discussion.
But I've been sitting here on my mouth, and it's just like, I keep hearing things, because you've got a school district that started with trees just literally around a corner. And you built the building based off of what projections, when they are also a large district and...
Okay, I, since three of us here on the board were here at the time, and actually, I think it was 2019, I don't think it was 2020. Bigger building means spending more money. We spent- We spent the amount of money that we thought we could afford for the projections that we had.
You should probably wait the, the building, uh, the sound from everything that was said is the building of the LLC building should have waited.
Okay, anyway.
Can, can I comment on that?
Sure.
We did wait and by the time we started building that building, the price of the materials
That's true.
had increased so much. So to wait longer and longer, it was gonna cost even more money.
I understand what you're saying, but also coming from a place with a homeowner and just based off the little things that I have to repair on my home, we're waiting to replace, let's say, a, a, the back porch or whatever. So we're waiting, those prices will, will adjust eventually. So it was an option to wait, and we all knew at the time because it happened with the pandemic and when we paid any of our building to deal with.
Okay, okay.
So those prices won't happen.
I appreciate what you're saying, but again, this is not a public forum where there's back and forth discussion. Um, if the board has any more discussion, I'm ready to hear it.
Did you have a question?
I'm just looking at the proposal here, um, by the teacher here. And the two elementaries, you have one that's utilized only at 50%, but the other one is almost at capacity. I don't see how we could really do that. I, I, I understand the breakdowns and those sound great suggestions, but I just don't think the state will approve those numbers.
Yeah, I mean, I-
Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, our student population, you, and you guys all know, you, you're, the teachers in here understand, our population fluctuates all the time. Our student enrollment fluctuates day by day. So to be 15 students under capacity, it would be great if we knew that it was gonna stay at 15 under. We, we would have no way of knowing that. I mean, I appreciate you putting the work in, I do. Um, okay.
You still have to put it on paper, like you didn't know until you got the question.
Any other discussion by the board?
I, I'm just a kind of curious about something. Um, I have kind of an audience, audience question, I guess. Um, you guys have all said that you would like to give more input. And I'm just kind of curious if this vote is approved. You know, we've given, where Dr. Hawkins has said that, that, um, there's space for committees to give input on how these buildings are configured. How many people, I guess by show of hands, you can abstain from voting if you'd like, how many people are actually interested in giving input and how the... Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you, that's, that's actually great.
I, I do know that, um, and, and it, sometimes it's hard for us to, to get the word out to people. You know, we can put things on the district website, but people who live in the community may not look at the school district website, for instance. I do know that, um, so far, a lot of the parents who have been asked, we do need one parent of a student, just one, right? Just one. On this commission, the parents who have been asked have been said, who, who, we've had quite a few who've said, what do I get paid for being on it? And when they say no, nothing, they said, no, not gonna do it.
I don't know.
So. Thank you. Now, bearing in mind, you did say that you might take your children out of the schools and they do have, it does have to be a-
I'm in the district, so I'm still a part of the community.
No, it has to be a parent with students enrolled in the schools, the state, that's-
Well, the state approve, is, gets the final approval anyway.
The state gets the final approval.
It would be to interview and they also, I don't know your background, they also want a parent with a financial background because they have to go through all of the district finances. So if you're interested, that's fantastic. I can give you my email.
Teachers, if you know a, a parent, feel free to call Dr. Hawkins and say, I know the perfect parent to be on this. If, if, you know, if, if you don't have a financial background or if you do think you might be taking your students out of the district or whatever. Um, you know, and we've told the state, we don't know how many parents we have who have a financial background who wanna do this for potentially four or five years.
I will say, we did reach out to each building level principal and ask them for names of parents that were active in the school. We sent 15 names up for the state to consider. They then will contact the parents. You go through an interview process and then they select one parent to represent. And the term probably will be about four years, once a month meeting.
Right, it's not our choice, the, the state chooses, but we give them suggestions. I don't know how we would do that exactly. I, I mean, to, I don't know. Was it put out to the community in general?
Technically, it's not our process. The state is responsible for finding the parent. They did ask us if we had parents that were already active in the school and their child had to be at least a seventh grader or younger because the process will probably be at least four years and they didn't want someone rotating off in the process. So the state, just out of consideration, asked us if we wanted to put forth some names. And that's when we did reach out to the buildings and ask, can you give us some names of parents who are involved, who might be interested in this opportunity? So we did try to reach out and again, the timeline is very short. So we received an email on a Monday and they wanted the names no later than Friday. And so that's another component of this entire process is that we're not given a month to do some screenings. We've been having community input meetings. If you're interested, the next one is on the 24th of April. We've had two so far with the community. We had one in February and one in March. And then we had our online meetings with our staff. There weren't very many parents, but we did ask those parents, are you interested, the ones that were there? And the ones that were there were not interested in serving in that way. But I, you know, I would love to see, I would love to see everyone that's here tonight to be at the community input meetings, to hear the community, what we're sharing with the community, but also to talk with our parents about what, what is going on.
Okay, um, does the board have any further discussion? Okay, I think we are ready for a vote.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item C is the recommendation to enter into a service agreement with Robin Nguyen. MED is a consultant to strengthen and enhance the gifted education program in the Mount Healthy City School District during the 24, 25 school year for up to 85 days at a rate of $750 per eight-hour day. And this will be paid with gifted funds. And I do wanna note that the current rate at the ESC is around $1,200 a day. So by coming to this agreement, independent of using the consortium, because they have to include benefits, um, insurance, things like that, that Ms. Nguyen is a retired educator and so we are able to get a little bit less by going and contracting with her one-on-one.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Say.
Moved by Ms. Bryant, seconded by Mr. Carter. Any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Item D is a recommend-
I'm gonna ask that we close the doors because there's a lot of noise out in the hallway.
Thank you. Item D is the recommendation to approve the following resolution. It's a resolution to suspend contracts in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code and the Board of Education policy. Whereas the Board of Education of the Mount Healthy City School District, hereafter the board, has received a recommendation from the superintendent of a reduction in force in the administrative exempt and certified staff. And whereas in addition to the authority provided in these sections of the Ohio Revised Code, the Board of Education has adopted policy pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code, permitting the board to institute reductions in force as a result of a financial reasons and due to reorganization and/or consolidation of functions. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Mount Healthy City School District as follows. And there is one person listed that would be reduced under this resolution. Section two, the superintendent shall provide notice to the affected employees of the suspension as soon as possible. And said notice shall, if applicable, include notice of right of recall pursuant to policy or if applicable, to a position under Ohio law. It is found and determined that all formal action of this board concerning or related to the adoption of this resolution was adopted in an open meeting of this board and all deliberations of the board and any of its committees that resulted in such formal actions were adopted in meetings open to the public in compliance with all applicable requirements of the Ohio Revised Code.
Do I have a motion? Moved by Mr. Kilgore, seconded by Ms. Bryant. Any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. The item E is the consent agenda. And you can see different people listed here. I do wanna note, under reinstatement, we do have three staff members that we are recalling due to resignations. So as people resign or take other jobs or possibly if someone were to retire, then we go down our RIF list and start calling people back. So these are not new positions. These are filling positions where someone did choose to leave.
Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented?
Motion.
Moved by Mr. Carter, do I have a second? Seconded by Ms. Bryant. Any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
No, I report.
Okay, special orders, we don't have any open discussion by the Board of Education. 13A, the date of the next Board of Education meeting. Regular board meeting is Monday, May 20th, 2024 at 6:00 PM. I will also reiterate what Dr. Hawkins, um, already said. April 24th, the next meeting to present information to the community and that will be at the high school in the auditorium.
At 6:30. We will be going over, at the last meeting, we had not received the official auditor's rep- oh, I'm sorry.
Can we discuss moving that meeting back to here because we do not have anyone in the board?
That's, this is the community meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. April, April the 24th. Um, we told everyone we would have the official auditor's report and so we will go over some key highlights on that, but we're really gonna focus on recovery. What we're doing to move into recovery as a district. So that will be the focus of the April meeting.
Okay, thank you. Item B, executive session. The board will go into executive session to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official. Do I have a motion to go into executive session? Moved by Mr. Kilgore, seconded by Ms. Bryant. Any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
There's an E on here.
Yeah. Mrs. Ellis, not with us anymore. Um, okay, we are going into executive session. I trust my clock more than I trust those. We'll say 8:26. Um, of course, anyone is welcome to stay. Till we come back in, we will not be taking any public votes or any public action after the executive session. We'll just come in and adjourn.